I am, please, Kurt.
Yeah, he's ready. Are you ready?
Um, yes.
Good evening. Justin, could you please give the invocation tonight?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Council. If you pray with me. Lord of heaven and earth, you have given to all mankind and to each one of us life and breath and everything that we might seek you for wisdom and strength. Lord, you have designed us with dignity and you've created us for respect and honor as we live our lives before you each and every day and as we live with one another in love. And, Lord, we confess together tonight that we do not always act honorably. We are often selfish, often demanding. But, Lord, we pray that you'd help us to act honorably before you tonight, even as we do the work here. Lord, we pray that you'd give Mayor Miller strength and grace as she moderates and to each one involved, council members, department heads, patience and wisdom. We are entirely dependent upon you and we give thanks to you for your gifts. We ask these things in the name of Christ, your Son, your greatest gift. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you. Now, we'll officially call this meeting to order. Madam Clerk, would you please take the role?
Mayor Miller?
Here.
Alder Person Clem?
Here.
Johnson?
Here.
Simmons is absent. Parker?
Here.
Stacy?
Here.
Shadle?
Here.
Sanders?
Here.
And Sellers is absent.
If you could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance led by Alderman Sanders.
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice and honor.
Item number one is approval of the agenda. Is there such a motion?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion made by Alderman Shadle, seconded by Alderman Parker. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes. Number two is approval of the minutes from the regular meeting on September 2nd. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
We have a motion made by Alderman Shadle, seconded by Alderman Clem. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes. Item number three is public comment. We have several. We will start with Clerk reading in the first one.
This was received from Diane Yokum. Dear Mayor Miller, City Manager Alder Persons, with regards to how bids and awarding contracts are done and with regards to tax breaks given to already privileged people at the expense of the greater population of taxpayers in Freeport, and in regards to how TIF districts are being abused, which smacks of cronyism and injustice, I'll keep my remarks simple. Make corruption and backroom deals to favor wealthy cronies and campaign donors seeking power, greater privilege, and to line already full pocketbooks at the expense of the poor. Wrong again. Sincerely, Reverend Diane Yokum.
Thank you. And we've had a request that if Alderman could please remember to speak into their microphone, they're not being heard in the tapes. Our second one is Angie Jansen.
Members of the council, as you prepare to vote for line item 16, I feel compelled to voice my concerns regarding the proposed changes in the management of Alberta's airport. My comments are rooted in over 28 years of dedicated service to that airport, a commitment that has been far more than a career. It's been my life. Individuals being considered for the airport manager position is an airline pilot. That raises significant concerns regarding the level of commitment and availability required for effective airport management. The responsibilities of an airport manager are not limited routine operations. They often require immediate attention, especially during emergencies. Should an incident ever occur with the manager on a trip, who's going to be present and who's going to respond? When the FAA and NTSB needs to speak with the leadership, they expect to interact directly with the manager, not someone filling in behind the counter. It is also important to consider the character and the rule adherence of any candidate entrusted with this responsibility. There have been instances where Jeff has disregarded established protocol. For example, he has ignored road closure signs simply to avoid a minor detour. Such actions set concern, precedence for an individual accepted to enforce rules and ensure safety and integrity of airport operations. Additionally, Jeff has expected special treatment with hangar rental due to his frequency being at the airport and relationships with city officials, even when there is a waiting list for these hangars. This approach undermines fairness of the airport. Roles exist for a reason, to protect not only individuals but also the city itself. The airport manager must always uphold and abide these principles, setting standards for others to follow. I urge the council to carefully consider whether this is the type of leadership you want Alberta's airport. The manager's role is critical to safety, reputation, and smooth operation of the facility. For full transparency, I want to make sure you are all aware that the draft of the airport manager agreement you were given is not the actual terms that were agreed upon. The RFQ and the draft agreement are two different documents. They do not coincide. In fact, there are contradictions between both. There are requirements listed in the RFQ that do not appear in the draft agreement and vice versa. It is essential that the agreement you approve truly reflects what is intended and what is best for Alberta's airport's future, not just what you were told in a memo.
Thank you.
Thank you for listening.
Ashley Hammon?
Ashley Hammon, I'm here tonight to speak on item number nine. I'm here tonight on behalf of one of my owners and myself. I would first like to note that neither myself nor my owner was notified of a possible change to an ordinance in regarding the short-term rental and noting that I am the rental registered agent for the rental registry. Please note that you would have had to go to the planning commission agenda to know that there was a public hearing to discuss the changes being presented to you this evening. With that said, when it comes to short-term rentals, often called vacation rentals, everyone seems to become a real estate expert, quick to say that they destabilize neighborhoods or create problems. In reality, vacation rentals also serve important purposes. Corporations need them to use to house their employees. Families use them to test neighborhoods before buying. Individuals who are displaced from their home due to certain circumstances, traveling employment, such as the traveling nurses that work for PHN. These homes are typically well-maintained because owners depend on good reviews and constant bookings. I am in the real estate business and I have firsthand knowledge of vacation rentals, complementing housing markets rather than harming them. I personally own several and have stayed at numerous short-term rentals. They provide flexibility for property owners, support local tourism, and offer families and employees more housing choices throughout a city. Many of the issues often raised with these rentals, noise, property maintenance, nuisance activities, are already addressed by city ordinance. The city has tools to address problems with these properties without stripping the rights of responsible owners. Instead of the current proposed changes and rezoning to only allow in certain districts and removing those rights, the city could cap the number of vacation rentals permitted in R1 through R4 zoning or require special use permits for all zoning areas. This would prevent overconcentrations, avoid clusters of rentals on the east side of town based on the current proposal change, and create a balanced approach that respects neighborhood character and provides property rights. Other cities like Galena have successfully started with a cap and extended those permits because they were going well. The city of Rockford requires special use permits for all areas for short-term rentals, no matter the zoning. The village of Cherry Valley, with only 2,300 people, has a short-term rental ordinance with no zoning restrictions with many successes. Many of these areas have asked for support and guidance in the ordinance. Freeport has some opportunity to balance regulation that works for everyone. To strengthen the ordinance further, the city could add guardrails, tie gas limits to the bedroom counter square footage, require a local property manager if the owner is not nearby, limit onsite vehicles, or revoke permits. This approach creates accountability without overreach, ensuring vacation rentals remain residential-friendly while protecting the rights of Freeport homeowners. Thank you.
John Staven?
Thank you. John Staven, 1070 North Canyon Drive. I'm here to speak on item 16, the airport manager agreement. Thank you for this time. I was the fifth person interested in the airport manager position. I have fought for Alberta's airport for years. When I found out Ms. Jensen was going to be removed, I thought I might be able to help. I looked for a notice that an RFP for the airport position was available. I found none. On April 30th, I went to the city hall and requested the RFP, request for a proposal. I received the RFQ, request for quotation, on August 13th and was required to respond by September 1st. Eighteen days to create an LLC, get the bonds, and other requirements. Only possible if you had prior knowledge this was happening. I responded to Mr. Boyer declaring that the RFQ was not biddable. As you all know, last year in this chamber, it became known that arrangements were underway to fill this position with a friend of the city. They just needed to wait until Ms. Jensen's contract expired. The draft contract to tonight's agenda was presented on the web, as presented on the web, is nothing like the contract Mr. Boyer was signing. Please read the final contract before you approve this. Please. Remember, this is a one-year contract with 19 automatic renewals. This runs 20 years. I must come out, comment on Mr. I must compliment Mr. Boyer. This hurts. He has bragged for a year privately. He was going to throw Angie Jensen off the airport. He has done just that. It wasn't pretty. It wasn't moral, and it certainly wasn't legal. In the next two years, the cost of operations at Alberta's airport will go up considerably due to lost hangar rent. I think the taxpayers should know this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Cheryl Altman?
Good evening. My name's Cheryl Altman. I'm going to start with number 13 first, with the solar savings program. I'd like to know, are the taxpayers the ones that are paying for all these solar panels going up? And also, who's getting all the incentives from all these solars going up? My next one is number five. They're running to Pete Elber for $2,000. That's $166.66 a month. You tell me where anybody in this town can go rent a space for $166.66 a month, only if you're friends and family with the mayor.
Madam Clerk, could you please note for the record that Alderman Simmons joined at 6:22?
6:22.
Correct.
Thank you.
So we'll move on to item number four, which is the consent agenda. The consent agenda is considered to be routine in nature, unless there's a member of the council would like to have something removed for further discussion. The consent agenda consists of approving to receive and place on file business, I'm sorry, building permit reports, police department reports, and fire department reports, all dated August 2025. The proclamation for National Sea Treks, thanks Train Week, September 15th through the 21st, approval for the 2026 holiday schedule, city council schedule, and the committee of the whole schedule, approval for the finance bills payable in total of $3,90279.24, and payroll ending September 6th, 2025, in a total of $668,777.79. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion made by Alderman Shadle, seconded by Alderman Johnson. Madam Clerk, please take the role.
Sanders?
Here.
On the consent agenda, do you approve?
No.
Clem?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Simmons? Parker?
Aye.
Stacy? And Shadle?
Aye.
The motion passes, six to two. Five to two. Thank you.
Okay, item number five is the second reading of ordinance 2025-53. Could you please read this?
Ordinance authorizing the city to enter into a fifth renewal to lease agreement with Pete Elber for 103 to 111 South Liberty Avenue.
Thank you. Manager Boyer?
Thank you, Your Honor. Pete Elber currently leases the first floor of the Raleigh metal-clad building. There are several floors in the building that are also available for rent. If anyone's interested, they're welcome to come to the city and solicit their interest in that. As for right now, Mr. Elber is leasing it for $2,000 annually, and this is the fifth renewal, staff requests moving forward with this fifth lease renewal.
Discussion? Alderman Stacy?
To my understanding, City Manager Boyer, forgive me, you speak about other floors being able to be rented. However, how would one know that when it's not put out there? You spoke about $2,000 a year. It's a steal. But what you didn't speak about is how the taxes that's paid on that building is paid by the city because it's in the city's name. And so it's maybe a little over $100 for the whole year.
But that's not accurate, Alderman Stacy. As it was discussed in the last meeting, the city is reimbursed for it.
Yes, the city is reimbursed. But why get those French benefits? Why is it in the city's name?
Because we own it.
Because he's renting that floor. Why isn't the rental agreement drawn up and the taxes on him? And not weepin' the benefit of the city?
Because we're the, we are, we own it. It's no different than, Manager Boyer?
I just wanted to add, there's a change to this lease that'll allow us to work out a sale price for the building between now and the next time this renews. So it would actually, it would actually do exactly what you're asking for. So if he was able to purchase the building from the city, which I believe the city is willing to, you know, liquidate at some point here soon, that would put the tax burden on.
At what cost? We're not hearing. What are you wanting to sell?
We're not quite there yet, and we have to renew the lease right now because we have a lease expiring. But in this version, we've made it available so we could open it up and sell the building if that meets council's approval.
What I don't want is that it be sold for a dollar.
Understood. I understand. So.
There's no further discussion? Alderman Sanders?
Yeah. This ordinance that we're looking at is considered an authorized ordinance by the city of Freeport. The city. Who's authorizing this? And is it a real ordinance? Is it, because I see here, I see it's doctored up here, an ordinance 2025-53. Is that a legit ordinance authorization from the city? And that means from the council. That means the council has to authorize that lease before you, Mr. Boyer, even consider, and it needs a revision, that ordinance and the leasing needs a revision for councils to go back to justify whether or not the price or the annual cost of the leasing meets the value of all of the other city properties. And the thing about it is, where is this ordinance at? And where is it coming from? And who's creating it? And how is it being bypassed by the authorities of the city? And we got to remember, it's the council that is the authority of this particular ordinance, not the city manager. And you can't call the shots on this particular leasing. You know, you just can't.
Lot of questions there. Do you mind if I answer a few of them? Okay. So where did it come from? We've had, we've been renting that building to Pete Elber since 2021. Then the rent at that time was $1,000. Then in 2022, the rent was increased to $2,000.
Who's authorizing?
The city council.
City council?
Yes.
Okay.
So in the city council has authorized it four previous times.
Four previous?
Yes, and we talked about it last meeting, and we discussed this, and.
Yeah, I know we did.
And so.
Let's review Robert's rules. When someone has the floor, please allow them to speak. This back and forth doesn't happen. If you have specific questions, that's a phone call.
Mayor, you cannot implement.
Attorney Zeta, would you like to address that question?
You can't implement a Roberts rule nor a Home rule.
I am the chair of this. You need to just back yourself up away from the microphone before you're called out of order. Please stop talking.
I'm going according to the rules.
Please stop talking.
You, you, you're the one brought Robert's rules.
Attorney Zeta, would you like to answer any of that?
You're the one implemented Robert's rules.
So, to address some of your questions in addition to what Manager Boyer said, the ordinance, this is, this ordinance is before you tonight so that the council can vote on it. This is not a done deal. It's here tonight for you guys. The reason why we're talking about it is so that the council can vote on whether or not you want to approve the ordinance or not.
Is it a legitimate, is it a legitimate ordinance, is what I'm saying?
It's legitimate in the sense that once you, if you guys vote to approve it, then it will become a approved ordinance by the city council. As of right now, it's pending your guys' vote.
So it's not an ordinance?
It'll be an enacted ordinance once you guys, exactly.
If we don't vote on it.
Or, right, or if it doesn't approve, then it's.
It's an ordinance.
Exactly. Yeah.
Okay, so we don't have an ordinance sitting on this agenda?
You have a draft of an ordinance for you to approve or not approve.
Has this been drafted? Has this ordinance been drafted?
Yes, it's in the packet.
Okay.
It's a draft ordinance to be considered by the council tonight. If you guys vote to approve it, then it will become a approved ordinance. If you vote not to approve it, then it goes away.
Okay, okay.
Madam Clerk, please take the role.
Sanders?
No.
Clem?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Simmons? Parker?
Aye.
Stacy? No. Shadle?
Aye.
I have five to two.
For the lease of property, an ordinance has to pass by three-fourths, three-fourths vote of the corporate authorities, so three-fourths of nine. So, because the corporate authorities are the council plus the mayor, you would need a vote of seven in order to pass. So this would not pass.
Thank you, Attorney.
We'll move on to item number six, which is the second reading of ordinance 2025-57. Could you please read this?
Am I in the wrong place? I'm on 54.
Oh, I'm sorry. I said it wrong.
Okay. You skipped ahead a little. 54. Ordinance establishing the Glade Wood Special Service Area and accepting dedication of roadways and levy of taxes to offset the cost of special services.
Manager Boyer?
Thank you, Your Honor. So the city received a petition from a majority of property owners in the Glade Wood subdivision requesting the creation of a special service area following required notices and a public meeting held on May 28th. No valid objections were filed. The ordinance establishes the special service area, dedicates the subdivision roadway to the city, and outlines the framework for funding ongoing maintenance. The SSA ensures improvements to the subdivision's upper and lower entrances, including roadway base and asphalt upgrades, meeting engineering standards. The city will also create a sustainable mechanism for funding services to the benefit area without burdening existing taxpayers with the full cost of the needed improvements. The ordinance provides for an annual levy of $400 per taxable parcel across 16 parcels. The revenues will offset costs of roadway maintenance and improvements specific to Glade Wood, ensuring equitable cost recovery. Staff recommends, moving forward with the ordinance establishing the Glade Wood SSA or Special Service Area.
And then, Manager Boyer, there's also the lined copy. Do you want to speak to that?
Just a few comments. This would go for approximately 15 years. I know that was a, or it will go for 15 years. That was a question that came up before. It also identifies the lot numbers and parcel IDs.
So what you have, counsel, would be a motion to add that amendment to clarify, correct? To clarify that there's 15 years put into the agreement?
Right. So from the version that was previously presented to you at the last council, there was inadvertently left out of the ordinance, the timeframe for which the SSA would be effective, which is 15 years. The petitioners, actually when they petitioned for the SSA, also agreed that it would be 15 years. So it was just inadvertently, your reference, was left out of the ordinance there. So what you have that was on your desk, in the red line, the underlying language is the additional language that would be proposed to be added into this. So if you guys are agreeable to that added language, just to clarify the fact that it's a 15-year assessment of this SSA tax, a motion and a second to add this underlying language in would be made, seconded. If that's approved, then you guys would move the second reading, final vote on the ordinance as amended.
So is there a motion to add the 15 years into the document?
So moved. Second.
A motion made by Alderman Shadle, seconded by Alderman Clem, discussion on the 15-year amended portion. Alderman Stacy?
What do we do after the 15 years?
It's, then it goes away. That assessment goes away. Alderman Sanders?
Yeah. Who was continually to, well, I want to call it the special, the special maintenance upkeep and everything. Is it because the city is going to take on the responsibilities of this particular site area?
Yes. Just, just to kind of hit some of the highlights, it was plotted that the road was a private street back in 19, I believe, 63. No one really knew that until we did some investigation as to the relation, related to Glade Wood Bridge and who was responsible there. Because it came to our attention, then we notified the residents of the area, affected area, that, you know, it was unclear as to who was the ownership. I think there were some arguments one way and the other as far as why it wasn't, why the city wasn't responsible today, but it was doing work in the past. This is essentially our negotiated settlement with the property owners in the area so that they're participating in the cost of the road that was never built to city specification, and we're offsetting the cost to fix it so that it's not completely borne by the taxpayers. Did that answer your question?
Is that the taxpayers of that particular area?
Yeah. Well, in Glade Wood, the lots that are mentioned in the ordinance, each one of them will be assessed $400 per year for 15 years. So there's approximately 16 landowners.
Oh, okay. All right.
Any other discussion on the amendment? Madam Clerk, could you please take the role on the amendment of adding the language of 15 years to the document?
Sanders?
Yes.
Clem?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Simmons? Parker?
Aye.
Stacy?
Aye.
And Shadle?
Aye.
The motion passes, seven to zero.
So then now before you, counsel, would be the passage of the amended version. If there's no further discussion, Madam Clerk, please take the role. I'm sorry, go ahead.
So I guess my only problem with this is we add them and then they, they jump the line. Like, we, we start Like we, we start on Glade Wood when we've had roads that have been part of the city infrastructure and have been waiting to get done. And then this area gets to go first because we added them and haven't done it.
It, it's a yes asterisk, okay? Right now, the entrance and exit of the area is in really poor degraded shape. So in the sense that, yes, we're going to fix approximately 400 feet of that road so that the entry and exit is passable. But the rest of Glade Wood will have to wait in the normal road program when council brings it to staff's attention that need to move forward. So it doesn't, this is not a reconstruct of the entire Glade Wood Road. This is simply the, dealing with the issues at the front and the back entry and exit areas.
Okay, just to follow up.
Sure.
More so of an opinion. I guess my problem with that is most of our roadways, the entry and exit areas need to be redone. So that's, that's my only thing with that. Like, that's fine, but in time, in your turn, like, we, we should, that's, I don't see the fairytale in that, letting them, we do it right away just because.
Well, in, in, to answer that, these residents are paying an additional $400 a month for, I'm sorry, $400 a year for 15 years so that we would be able to have the cost offset to make repairs to that area. So there is a give and a take there.
Can I follow up with that?
Alderman Sanders?
Yeah, is that a collective annual 400 a year for the collective area for, or individual?
Individual.
Individuals, okay, good, all right.
Alderman Stacy?
Every home in this Glenwood area will be paying $400 every year.
For 15 years.
For 15 years.
Yes.
And they're in agreement with this.
Yes, that's what took so long to.
The majority.
Yes, there's going to be people who may not agree, but we, we have gone through the process, followed the legal procedures, and we are able to move forward with a special assessment based upon the participants.
Madam Clerk, please take the role.
This is on final passage with the amendment.
Yes.
Clem.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
Stacy.
Aye.
And Shadle.
Aye.
And the ordinance passes seven to zero.
Item number seven is the second reading of ordinance 2025-56. Could you please read this?
Ordinance amending chapters 1248 and 1250 of the zoning code of the city of Freeport concerning ground-mounted solar arrays.
Thank you, Director Duckman.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So the last time this was up, we're at second reading right now. And at the first reading, it was discussed a little more, might maybe wanted a little more detail about the voting and what was discussed. So as stated in the first, the first reading, the vote was five to zero to zero. And at our planning commission, and the people that were present were Ryan Walton, Matt Moyer, Andrea Schultz-Winner, Dr. George Walker, and Dustin Wilkinson. So specifically, that's who was present. I know Director Stieckel had also mentioned, had talked about this matter, but he was not present. Bill Green also wasn't present. So just giving a little background here, there was, due to the fact that Mr. Stieckel and Mr. Green were not present, they were, you know, as we'd stated earlier, two members who were, had strong opinions on this matter. They were not actually at the meeting. Truly, there was discussion, but it wasn't, I wouldn't call it lengthy. And, you know, with all that being said, this matter was discussed at the planning commission meeting, and staff is recommending moving the, recommending moving this ordinance forward.
Discussion? Madam Clerk, please take the role.
Hold it.
Alderman Sanders?
Hold it. Last meeting, were you making reference to not moving it forward?
No, I, the last, the first reading, I recommended, and it was voted to move it forward for second reading.
Oh, it was?
Yes.
Okay, my, my, my thing is, okay, with that, who does all of the, the infrastructure or the construction of this solar mounting and, and who benefits from it?
Well, I mean.
Is that related? I would have to agree. That really doesn't have anything to do with this ordinance of who does what. A question on the ordinance about, you can go in that direction.
There's not, I think another way, I think what Mayor Miller is saying is that this ordinance has to do with somebody being allowed to, to put or install a solar, a solar panel in their backyard.
Yeah, I, I, I know that before I was rudely interrupted, I, I understa, I understand that. But my thing, my, it says concerning, there's a concern there when I'm reading this about the mounting, the ground mounting. Is the city of Freeport or the, or the residents should be concerned about the mounting of this particular product? Or, or what are we, what are we talking about?
Well, I, I think the idea here is that there was quite a bit, I would say, in what was discussed in the first reading is that it tends to be a contentious topic when we're in residential neighborhoods. It tends to be people coming to the hearings more than most, and there's a negative opinion in residential neighborhoods generally that ground-mounted solar doesn't fit with the character of the neighborhood. And so, sorry, go ahead.
Can you give me the characteristics of this ordinance? And kind of define it for me so I can understand exactly how did this ordinance came to be, came into existence?
Director Stieckel, would you like to address that?
Well, I sit on the planning commission, and it was the direction of the commission members that they are not interested in having ground-mounted solar. Currently, our ordinance provides, if you wish to have roof-mounted solar, that's fully acceptable, and you don't need city approval to do that. In order to put it on the ground, which most of it's built through steel structures on the ground, and it becomes a giant lawn ornament, right? That's, that's the contention of the, the planning commission is neighbors generally don't want to see these in their yard if they're not in favor of them because they're very large and obtrusive. So it has nothing to do with the structure itself, as in the way it's structurally built. It's in the looks of the property.
Right.
And these types of panels only benefit the actual user that installs them. Nothing goes back to the grid. It's for the house only.
Oh, okay.
Alderman Stacy?
Currently, how many ground-mounted solar do we have?
So the la, I did a little bit of research on that. We had, and this is in the past two years, we've had an uptick in it, in the amount of the solar projects. And the reason that it, there's an uptick is there's, many of the pri, the private sector has truly pushed the installation of solar due to the fact that there's incentives to construct solar. So there, essentially, salespeople are, I'm sure everyone in this room has had a salesperson trying to sell them solar. So in the past year, we've had Park Hills, which was owning of a Port of Appeals. They recommended approval four to zero. Planning Commission at that point recommended five to one. It passed city council. Park Hills has had quite a few people complain after the fact. They don't like the way it looks. And I think, and moving on from there, we had 1405 South Benson, which was a large residential lot. The zoning board of appeals recommended approval five to zero. Planning Commission voted five to zero. That ended up passing our city council. 1161 West Lincoln, zoning board of appeals recommended approval five, zero with one abstention. The planning commission voted against this, and it ultimately failed council. So you're starting to see midway through this timeline that when they passed early on, people started to complain in the neighborhood, and then our planning commission was listening. And then as these started to come on during time, people saw them installed in the neighborhoods, and they, they didn't like it. So the attitudes of our people have said, our planning commission was listening and was saying, okay, we remember what happened at Park Hills Church. We know that our community isn't happy about ground-mounted solar residential neighborhoods, and you're starting to see it in the evidence because it let 1161 West Lincoln, planning commission voted against it, it failed city council. Then you look at Harmony Church, that was a highly contested ground-mounted solar project. That went through zoning board of appeals five to zero. Planning Commission was zero to six to one. So at this point, you're starting to see our planning commission is digging in its heels, not really seeing the connection to our community with ground-mounted solar. Ultimately, that did pass council, although it took several hearings before it was heard. So the point here is that, to your, to your point, our planning commission noticed that it's not really been, it was not well-received in our community, and they directed staff to draft an ordinance that would eliminate it zoning-wise in residential neighborhoods.
Um, Director Duckman?
Yes.
I think giving all that information about how the zoning department feel is being said to sway the vote. My original question was, in the past two years, how many have we approved?
We've approved three out of four. We have approved three out of the four.
We're not approving any ground mounted tonight. We're trying to remove it.
I understand, but it goes back, um, Madam Mayor, it goes back to us allowing some, and now not others. And how do you say yes to one and no to someone else? I guess you just say it, but.
Darren?
I'd love to answer one if I can. So this goes back to realistically the error of City Manager Crowe, who decided at that time with the council that we were a solar-friendly city, and we were experimenting with solar and trying to, you know, a lot of communities were looking at the facts of what solar was and wasn't. And so as with any new process, you learn things over time, what works and what doesn't work. And we did allow a handful of these projects to move forward, and we've gotten feedback from community members more than like them. We've had more feedback that people don't like them. The biggest example is the one that's at Park Hills Church. There's, there's, I don't want to say there's been issues with it throughout, but maintenance has been a problem, fencing's been a problem. It's obtrusive to the neighbors. Those are something that nobody could see happening until it, it started to happen. And we're also talking the difference between residential zoning and commercial zoning. So this application here is for residential home zoning. So it'd be if your next-door neighbor came to the council and said, I want to fill my backyard full of an array, and you can see it from your house, while it's their property.
It's their property.
Well, I'm glad you feel that way, but a lot of other people don't because it's, it becomes their, their problem. And, and Dwayne's exactly right. In dealing with a lot of solar companies over the last year, many of the solar companies are pushing the ground mount because it's cheaper for them to install than the roof mount, and it's less work for them long, long-term, even though it hides it better from the community. So while I do sit on the planning commission, and I agree totally with their recommendation to get rid of this, this wasn't pushed by me. This was a completely unanimous vote by the planning commission, and we directed council, which is Mr. Cox that sits on that, on that committee, to draft this ordinance so we don't have to keep having these hearings and discussions about ground-mounted solar because we don't think that it fits the residential platform. We're not talking about panels that are two-by-two. We're talking about panels that are 10 by eight. It's a big difference.
Yeah, it is.
And so the panels that get primarily mounted on rooftops now are about a two, two-by-two square in bundles that they put on based on your usage. The ones that they put in backyards are actually a trapeze of steel that they get put on, and most of the panels are eight to 10-foot tall and probably four foot wide. And the average house probably needs four to six of them to gain power. So we're talking about, you know, a mini RV of solar panels sitting in the backyard that everybody's got to steer at in their community.
But that's not what Harmony asked for. That's not what, um.
That is exactly what Harmony asked for.
That large.
Yes, ma'am, and you.
And it was in the back.
It was, it was by their garage, near the trees of their property. But that is exactly what they asked for, and that's what this council approved.
Yes, because what was the, the danger of it? Other than we might see it driving down, what's the road?
Pearl City Road.
Yes.
The danger of it, in my opinion, is exactly what we're talking about here. That church is in a residentially-zoned area that opens up to more residentially-zoned people adding this. And so what the planning commission is recommending, and I'm, I'm not speaking for everyone, but I think based on the vote I can, we're recommending that this is not a path that Freeport should move forward, that it will not long-term benefit residential properties, and it'll become an eyesore, like a, an old car sitting in a yard. Over time, that's what these.
Well, we get plenty of that.
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
So that's just the recommendation. What the council does with it is their will.
If there's no further discussion, Madam Clerk, please take the role.
Sanders?
No.
Clem?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Simmons?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
Stacy?
No.
And Shadle?
Aye.
The motion passes five to two.
Item number eight is the first reading of ordinance 2025-57. Could you please read this?
Ordinance revising codified ordinances to create the position of operations superintendent.
Thank you, Manager Boyer.
Uh, thank you, Your Honor. The Freeport Public Works team is requesting that council create a job description for the department in a restructuring effort. At this time, we are requesting the creation of a new position, Public Works Operations Superintendent. This is not an additional position to the department, but a promotional opportunity for a department leader to assume more management duties and responsibilities within the combined department leadership team. Due to a key employee leaving the city public works team, the department is looking to restructure important key roles and responsibilities, allowing better collaboration and uniting the overall team. Creating an operations superintendent role will enable the department leader to effectively manage the daily activities of the construction crew and be involved in the utility operations division. This change will facilitate more departmental collaboration. Strategic plan alignment, alliance with teamwork, integration in departments are especially important because they direct impact the efficiency, consistency, and overall performance of the division. This position change is an important first step in evaluating overall non-bargaining job duties to ensure a unified approach to the departments. This new job description is budgeted for through the public works budget and should not increase the overall payroll of the department. So staff recommends moving forward with this. And there is a request, due to the timeliness of this, there is a request for suspension of the rules.
Is there a motion to move this forward?
So moved.
A motion made by Alderman Shadle, seconded by Alderman Clem. Discussion on this, Alderman Stacy? Alderman Stacy?
Does this have something to do with an open position in public works?
It does have something to do with an open position in public works in the water utility. So recently, the utility operation, or the utility superintendent has moved on, and we felt that this was a good opportunity to consolidate the, the department's overall. And that's why staff is asking for a new person to oversee the public works department.
Alderman Sanders?
Yeah, is that a salary-based position?
Yes, sir.
And, and we're going to replace, are we going to replace it as a salary? Or are we going to incorporate it within the city structure?
So we'll incorporate it. It would basically. So we'll incorporate it. It would basically mean the street superintendent position would remain, it would, it would no longer be filled, and the utility superintendent wouldn't be filled. And then we would fill it with a operations superintendent whose overall responsibility covered both. And then we would, we'll be bringing back an assistant for that individual to help cover weekends and times that they're unable to be there, and also have a little bit more background in the operations and regulatory end of the water utility.
Okay, the assistants is not going to be of...
Would you like your second time of speaking, Alderman Sanders?
Oh, I thought I was in a conversation, not...
No, Darren, did you want to have the...
Yeah, I just want to give a point of clarity to Rob's statement there. So this is creating a job, uh, position that we currently don't have in the structure. That's what it's doing. It's not adding a role, it's giving, it's giving a new role to an old position that we currently don't have. So this will allow us to change the job description of an individual, and allow him to manage more areas than currently is aligned in his job duties, his or her job duties. So, um, this provides us opportunity to somewhat restructure and reorganize the department, which we started again many years under City Manager Crowe, and then we've been doing this little at a time as jobs have turned over. So we're not adding, asking for an additional position, we're asking for merging a few positions together at this time to have one person oversee more areas. And we don't currently have this role, and that's why we're asking approval to create this role.
Alderman Johnson?
So would this be filled by someone inside already here, or would this be something we would...
Um, we believe we have a, I'm sorry to interrupt, we believe we have a qualified internal candidate for this position, so...
Alderman Stacy?
Would this position also be cover, covering the position where the gentleman resigned from?
That's correct.
And so, it's like, in a roundabout way, I hear what you're saying, and I hear what you're saying, but it's like, it's like we're ignoring the fact that a person you put in position has left the department. And so that is an opening position, or you're telling me it's not going to be an opening position, because we're going to add those duties to someone else's duty. So if we could have done that from the beginning, why did we ever hire this gentleman? Because that's who you chose, that's who you wanted, and we hired him.
Well, I, you'll have to ask that individual. However, we're asking for councils, um, I'm not going to speculate on the motivations or, or the needs of that individual.
I mean, why did we need that position then if we don't need it now?
Well, as I mentioned, it'll be, the superintendent will oversee all of public works, and will be asking for an assistant to also come alongside to cover weekends.
And the superintendent did not do that before?
Correct. They did, but they, they, it was not, it was not a clearly defined role.
And, and the way it's being explained tonight is not clearly defined?
Okay. Well, the job description is provided, so I could give that to you if you'd like.
No, I have it.
Okay.
Okay, there's no further discussion, we'll move on. Oh, actually, it was a request for suspension of the rules, if someone wants to make that motion.
So move. Second.
A motion made by Alderman Clem, seconded by Alderman Shadle for suspension of the rules, it's non-debatable, it's passed by two thirds majority. Madam Clerk, would you please take the roll on the suspension only?
Sanders?
No.
Clem?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Simmons?
No.
Parker?
Aye.
Stacy?
No.
And Shadle?
Aye.
The motion to suspend fails because it needs two thirds, and we only ended up with, what, four to three?
American vote, because half the council's been, has voted in favor.
Repeat that again?
What? Don't we need six people, Attorney Zito?
Correct.
One, two, three, we only have four.
One, two...
We have four to three.
Oh, I'm sorry. So, so you can, you can, you can call the mayor's vote, but I don't, depending on how you vote, I don't know if it makes a difference or not.
I, I object.
You can't object, this is an attorney ruling.
Wait a minute, it's not an attorney ruling, it's a council ruling. What are you talking about? This is not a...
Please, please don't interrupt, Alderman Sanders.
Well, you, you can't be saying things like that.
So, um...
Will it make any difference?
No, no, because right now you have one, two...
The best we'd have is five to three.
Right, so that still wouldn't pass.
Okay, so the suspension fails. We'll move this on to the next regularly scheduled meeting.
Come on, Mayor.
Item number nine is the first reading of ordinance 2025-58. Could you please read this?
Ordinance amending chapters eight, 10, and 1250 concerning the licensing and zoning of vacation rentals.
Director Duckman? Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Community Economic Development Department has been directed to draft an amended ordinance, and the idea here is that vacation rentals, which is VRBO, Airbnb, it's getting a little less technical here to kind of give you a better idea of what we're talking about, short-term rental in line with those popular products, is essentially, what currently happens here is you could own a single-family house, and you could put it on Airbnb with proper licensing, and have a short-term rental, weekend, et cetera. So, you know, it has been brought to our attention to, and we were directed to draft a new ordinance that essentially is removing vacation rentals from the R1 through R4 residential districts. So, again, to kind of break down what's going on here, R1 through R4, that is where you're allowed to have a single-family home, not a duplex, not a four unit, that is your true one-family residential neighborhoods. And what has been directed, and what staff is proposing tonight, is eliminating short-term rentals in single-family housing. That's the simplest way to kind of boil it down. And a little background here, and also, what would essentially happen is, if you have a single-family home, we would be, we're proposing to eliminate the short-term vacation rentals. If you have a two-unit duplex, three-unit, four-unit, et cetera, it would be a special use permit. So, um, that I hope gives a basic understanding of what's being proposed here. To go with a little bit of background, on August 14th, a public hearing was held by our planning commission, and the outcome of that meeting was that our planning commission heard public comment, we had one supporter and one objector present, and to be clear, the supporter for, or pro-vacation rental would be Clerk Anderson. Do you remember being there, just to confirm?
I was the opposer.
I'm sorry, you were opposing the, I'm getting, I'm getting the pros and negatives, but to be fair, you're pro, you were pro, you are, you are not pro, you're against...
I'm against the ordinance change.
Yes, yes.
And I was present, yeah.
Yes, just wanted to make that clear, and that alderperson, Clem, was also at the hearing, and he was for the ordinance, which would outlaw the vacation rentals. So I wanted to make that clear for some background. So after that hearing was held by our planning commission, they wanted to, uh, here, take some time, and a motion was made to discuss at the next hearing, which was September 11th of 2025. And all that being said, the planning commission recommended approval of this text amendment pertaining to vacation rentals with what I had said earlier, eliminating them from the single-family residences. And with that in mind, staff is recommending, recommending moving this ordinance forward. Is there a motion to move this forward?
So move. Second.
A motion made by Alderman Clem, seconded by Alderman Shadle. Discussion on the ordinance? Alderman Clem?
Sure. Uh, the real crux of this comes from, uh, everybody here believes in Airbnbs, everybody believes that it can be a positive thing for the community, there's no doubt about that. But it stems from, mostly stems from two, an incident and where it was at, basically. And I believe it was June 6th at one of these Airbnbs, that this person, first of all, I'll go back to the point where I was here when they originally discussed Airbnbs over a year ago, and nobody really brought up the thought of what was going to happen in that area, what could happen in that area, what could develop in that area. Nobody in that area would know who's going to be in that house, when they're going to be in that house, when it's rented, when it isn't going to be rented, and who's there. Also, this person that rents his house doesn't have all the capabilities in the world of finding that out, who calls him up and says, I want to rent your house for the evening. So this house here is in a neighborhood that's probably 250 to $300,000 houses. On Friday night, all of a sudden, a whole bunch of cars started pulling up to the house. And keep in mind, as this person rents this Airbnb, they have their total family with little kids above this. They rent out just their basement only, they've developed a sidewalk and entrance into that basement, they've created a pool out there, and they've created an area where this could be used. Approximately, they got a phone call, I'm not sure what the time was, to confirm it with the chief, but 10 o'clock is the area in there. One of the neighbors called, the owner also called, he had a whole bunch of people downstairs, there were cars out in the street, and come to find out, the whole end of this deal was there were probably, I believe, 10 to 15 youths, under 20 years old left, and they confiscated, I'm going to say at least a dozen loaded weapons, okay? Now, I don't think this is a normal thing that should happen at your house on Friday night, especially if you live in a two, $300,000 through $300,000 neighborhood. That's my concern. The people have come to me, okay, and said, look, if I buy a house in a residential area in single-family homes, I'm expecting it to be a single-family home. I'm not expecting a commercial thing to be rented out. The night before this happened, there were 10 cars there, okay? What this person actually did is there's zero security involved in it, they provided no security, and instantly, the police were called. So we were their security for this whole thing to try and straighten it out, and you've got people still that from the DNA, all these weapons are going to be possibly traced to different people, and there'll be arrests made off the deal. So that enlightened everybody there to say, hey, this is what we got in our neighborhood, and we don't like it. So that's where my opinion and the opinion of all the people in that neighborhood come from.
Any other discussion? Alderman Johnson?
I'm not sure how many of these Airbnbs we have here in Freeport, but they are businesses?
Three.
Three is all we have?
We have three in single.
Okay, and they bring, I mean, they bring people in who spend money here, so that's, you know, part of the city. The other thing I'm thinking about, you know, you do take a chance when you're a person that owns an Airbnb of who you rent to, but I know any of the vacation rentals that we've ever rented, there's a very long contract that you have to fill out with them, that has a lot of stipulations on it, what you can do and what you can't do, how many cars you can park there, and, and a lot of things that regulate that, that I think could be put in place for those that do have Airbnbs. So I don't know, and you know, plus the fact that, and you, when you live in a home, you don't really know if that house beside you goes up for sale. You don't know who might come in there, you don't know if they might have guns, you don't know if they might be on drugs, and you know, that sort of thing. So there's, you know, you take chances every day. So I'm not sure that this would be friendly for the city of Freeport to say, we don't want your Airbnb businesses in our residential areas. There's not very many R5 or R6 areas, I know west of, west of west, there's a lot that are east of west. So I'm not sure how all that plays out for fairness for people that own those homes and maybe are looking to have a business here in Freeport. We could put a limit maybe on the number of Airbnbs we have. Also, I'm thinking, could we do like they have to have a special use permit every year, or something like that, instead of totally, totally disregarding this altogether? Those are my thoughts.
Alderman Simmons?
I'm sorry, but that is laughable. So because it happened in this area, and these houses are worth that much, we're going to ban it for single-family houses. But in the areas that happen to be mostly apartments, we're going to allow it, because these houses are 250, $300,000, which was repeated a couple of times. So it's not okay there, but it's okay in other neighborhoods. And to even feel safe making a statement as such is, is... Wow.
Wow. Wow. Director Duckman, I have a question. In this, would that be in effect immediately, or is there, can you enlighten that there's three businesses that would be affected, how far out, that kind of thing? So essentially, the ordinance reads that this would, they would have to still, the, basically, the current licenses for the three properties that we're speaking of, they would still have to reapply for the license. If they let it lapse on their own, they let it lapse on their own. But if they continue to reapply, it would sunset January, January 1st, 2029. And after such date, all licenses would cease to be valid. So a little over three years? Correct. Any other discussion?
I have my second.
Sure.
I would like to agree with alderperson Johnson. We are trying to be a tourist town, we are trying to do things to draw people here. We only have two, I'm not sure if the other one is still open, legitimate hotels that you wouldn't mind staying in. So, and myself, I have a couple of kids, so when we go, we use Airbnbs. I don't understand why you would want to stop that for the city of Freeport. Like, that just doesn't make sense.
Anyone else?
Yeah.
Alderman Sanders?
Yeah, um, Director Duckman, how long has this, do you know if you know that this ordinance has been in existence?
Well, I, the current short-term vacation rental ordinance, I would say, has been what, Clerk Anderson, five years, was right around COVID, I think?
We had bed and breakfasts on the books for a very long time, because that's an older model, but we added the Airbnb, pre-COVID. I've been here eight years, somewhere between five and eight years.
It's a newer concept, correct? So when we're talking short-term rentals, the idea generally is that short-term rentals, and by the way, it is a, not just in the city of Freeport, it's a, it's a hot topic, it causes quite a bit of conflict. You know, on one side of the coin, people believe that they're good for the community because they are adding tourism, and it also allows property owners to make some extra revenue. On the other side, not just in the city of Freeport, but there has been, you know, complaints with people use them for parties, or use them for nefarious activities, and it makes neighbors upset. So I think there's good discussion here. Staff was directed to draft this ordinance. It's through the planning commission, it's had two planning commission meetings, and I anticipate for the next two readings, if it gets that far, there's going to be plenty more heated discussion, so... Alderman Sanders?
Yeah, just elaborating on the concerning of neighborhood areas that has got a concern about the vacationing property, and the zoning, and the licensing, and we have not set up any policies or anything like that, guidelines, for the people who does have concerns about the area of vacationing rentals and things like that. We have not set up guidelines for those kinds of things. What are the policy terms and conditions that, that helps to guide to let the community know, or the citizens know in the community area, that these are the guidelines that you have to abide by, and what is permitted and what is not permitted? Have we had that discussion, or have you had that discussions with those residents that are already currently living in those areas?
Yes, we had... Yes, we had, let's see, we had two Planning Commission meetings, you know, that we talked about before. I took some notes on that. We had a meeting on August 14th, and as I stated before, Clerk Anderson and Alderman Clem were in attendance there. Notes I wrote down from that meeting was quite a bit of consideration and discussion. And based on that, from August 14th, the meeting was moved to the next regularly scheduled meeting for more discussion. So the second meeting would have been September 11th, and, you know, again, some of the issues that were, one of the notes I wrote was that one supporter, Alderman Clem, his concerns were for safety, illegal activities, and parking concerns. And, you know, as Clerk Anderson has stated, she's provided that, you know, she's obviously works in the licensing and could fill you in on all of the requirements for a license, but she also came in as a member of the public, issuing her support of the, you know, of the matter. So, I mean, to answer, the reason I'm stating this is to answer your question, has the public been notified? Well, yes, through two meetings before we've even gotten to this part of it, and we've had members of our-
Does this ordinance have protocols to it? Does this ordinance have protocols?
Yes.
It does have protocols, and so that should spill everything out to the residents-
Yes.
-of those areas, am I correct?
The easiest thing to explain to somebody is no. Can I, if I have a single-family house, what is the protocol for having a vacation rental? That's easy, no. That's what you're voting for. You believe, and I'm not trying to be insulting, but, I mean, that's literally what this says. You know, you cannot have, you know, "I want to have an Airbnb in my single-family house." If you vote for this, you're saying, "No, you cannot." Or if you're in favor of it, you're saying, "Yes, you can do it." That's, that's the heart of it. You know what I mean? There is no, I mean, once, if you vote for this ordinance, you're saying, "We don't think it fits in our community." No, you can't do it.
Alderman Parker?
That's, go ahead. Sorry, I'm sorry.
But you can in duplexes in apartments, can you clarify that?
Yeah, I'm sorry, and I, yes, I was asked to clarify that, okay, so I'm just, I always, I always try to talk and make things simple, my best I can. Single, right now, what you would be voting on is single-family house, no, you cannot have an Airbnb. If you have a duplex, you would have to go to a hearing and ask for permission, or ask, you'd have to have it voted on by council, which is that special use hearing. If you have a duplex, you would have to come, it wouldn't be allowed by right. You would still have to show up to a zoning board hearing, to a Planning Commission hearing, and to a city council hearing to be allowed to have a Airbnb or VRBO.
And we're not voting on anything tonight? This is first reading.
Okay.
Alderman Parker?
I wasn't going to say anything, but the way I understand this, I own a single-family home, and if I happen to be a snowbird and want to go to Florida for the winter, and I have some friends that want to come in and rent my house, I can't do it under this ordinance. You know, it's my house, I didn't ask permission when I bought the thing.
What's defined short-term?
Less than 30 days.
What if I go a month, two weeks?
What defines short-term?
Less than 30 days.
Less than 30?
Okay. Maybe I want to go visit my family out in California for two weeks or three weeks. Somebody said needs a place, yeah, come on in, can't do that. But I didn't get permission when I bought the place, so I'm just against it, so, thank you.
All right, then we will move on.
I did want to just share, if nobody else, if nobody else mirrored my thoughts. So I, I just, I believe the Airbnb craze is really popular. I think it's growing nationwide. I think it adds a lodging option. Personally, I've, I've stayed in many, in several states, single-family homes, multi-units. I've stayed by myself. I felt very safe. Currently, there are three license holders, but we've had more. And if you go onto an Airbnb website, as many as like maybe even seven will pop up. It's very difficult to find where these are located, and you don't get an address until you make that reservation. So you don't know, you don't know the location. I have already sent out applications to, you know, I'll find an address, I'll find a homeowner, and they will sometimes ignore the application. Our, our third one just got licensed this year because it's a new owner, but I knew where it was for years. They just never turned the application back in. There's probably about three I don't know of, three I know of that I don't know the address for. One of my concerns is if this passes, it will be very punitive to the people who have followed the rules. We have three people who have come in religiously and got licensed, very easy to work with, but I, I don't see any enforcement or no, no gut to go out and find those ones who aren't licensed. So we're going to punish the ones who have been licensed by taking their license away. That, that doesn't make sense to me. I attended both Planning Commissions. I, I heard, you know, we don't want it in our neighborhood. I think that special use is the tool to solve that, because you ask our neighbors. You could leave it a special use, R1, single-family, it could be special use all the way through. And then when somebody wants to get licensed, they get the special use. Can you ask your neighbors, "Do you want us here?" They can say yes, they can say no, and, and that'll just take care of itself. It'll be in the neighborhoods that want it, it'll be in the neighborhoods that don't. We do have, we do have ordinances on the books, and I'm quite certain the number of cars are limited, because I remember that being a big discussion. We might have even limited it to one, but no more than two cars are allowed. And I suspect that's maybe why the owners maybe started calling, because that, they knew that was something they could, they could call about, was too many cars in the driveway. And I just wanted to address, you know, this was a very unfortunate event. I don't want it to happen again, but I, this, I think this is kind of throwing the baby out with the bathwater. I, I think we're knee-jerking too many rules over one bad incident, and I just wanted to add that there was concern about that, in this particular incident, there were children living upstairs. And I, I feel for that, I understand that, but also, this homeowner cho, chose to get that license, knowing he has two children, and I think that should be the homeowner's choice. My two cents.
Appreciate it. All right, we will move on to item number 10, which is the adoption of Resolution 2025-109. Could you please read this?
Resolution authorizing the payment of an invoice from Green Road Tire Recycling for Citywide Tire Recycling Collection Event, held on August 23rd.
Thank you. Director Bridge?
Thank you. Good evening. In August, the city of Freeport conducted a tire recycling event where residents could bring passenger car and semi-truck tires to be disposed of. The city utilized the services of Green Road Tire Recycling to dispose of the tires. This event was planned in coordination with other dumping events such as Refresh Freeport and the Electronic Recycling Event. Guild's Freeport Disposal recommended Green Road to be the main collector of the tires. At the event, they collected 7,029 passenger car tires and 118 semi-truck tires. Hundreds of residents took advantage of this service, and the city received positive feedback from residents and surrounding communities. The full amount of the invoice, which is about 38,000, has been budgeted for and will be paid from the Health and Environment Fund.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second.
A motion made by Alderman Shadle, seconded by Alderman Johnson. Discussion on the resolution? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please take the roll.
Sanders is temporarily absent. Clem?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Simmons?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
Stacy?
Aye.
And Shadle?
Aye.
The resolution is adopted, six to zero.
And move on to item number 11, which is the adoption of Resolution 2025-111. Could you please read this?
One moment. Resolution setting the date and hours for trick-or-treating in the city for 2025.
Thank you, Manager Boyer.
Thank you, Your Honor. In the past, trick-or-treating has been observed on Halloween, October 31st. For the past several years, the hours have been from 5:00 PM to 7:00 PM. This year, Halloween falls on a Friday. This year, the city is collaborating with the Freeport School District, second graders, and their Civic Responsibility Unit for Social Studies. They will be touring City Hall and the police station, and have the opportunity to role-play a city council meeting deliberating the same resolution. Staff recommendation is to keep the trick-or-treating on Friday, October 31st, from 5:00 PM to 7:00 PM. Staff requests the approval of this resolution.
Is there a motion to adopt?
Go prove. Second.
Motion made by Alderman Parker, seconded by Alderman Shadle. Discussion on the resolution? Madam Clerk, please take the roll.
Sanders is absent. Clem?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Simmons?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
Stacy?
Aye.
And Shadle?
Aye.
The resolution is adopted, six to zero.
And item number 12 is the adoption of Resolution 2025-112. Could you please read this?
Resolution approving application for contract with Flock Safety for Live Video Cameras, Additional License Plate Reader Cameras, and Mobile Trailer Cameras.
Thank you. Chief Schenberger?
Thank you. So as I discussed last week, earlier in the year, I had some representatives from Flock that came and did a presentation on the products that they offer and, and how they could help us as law enforcement officers. I've applied for several grants and looked for different funding throughout this year, and fortunately, I was able to secure some funding through Senator Durbin's office by utilizing lobbyists through Sound Thinking. There's a, you know, wish list of things that, that comes with that. However, we, we realized that if that funding falls through, more than likely, it's not going to happen. And within the contract for Flock, there's a contingency, if, if appropriations, for some reason, don't pass, then, then we are, we're not, or we don't have to pay that amount of money. So we also, I also secured Organized Crime Retail Theft Grant from the Attorney General's Office for $9,000. So the plan basically is to leverage that money to start this project one month early that gives us into December, and then utilize the appropriations dollars for the year of 20, 2026 and 2027.
Thank you, Chief. Is there a motion to adopt?
So moved. Second.
Motion made by Alderman Shadle, seconded by Alderman Parker. Discussion on the resolution? Madam Clerk, please take the roll.
I have.
Oh, Alderman, Stacy, I'm sorry.
So this is, you're asking for voting to approve this?
Approve the resolution for the chief to move forward on what he just made a comment on.
I do have a question, but I don't know, do it come now or later? This is the one pertaining to the drones you were speaking of?
No, this is for license plate reader cameras, some live video bundles with those, a trailer camera that is live video, and then a trailer camera that has a license plate reader camera in it. And also, it's just like a speedwagon with a license plate reader camera in it.
Can you tell me, like, what does it cost per year to operate this?
Right, so, I mean, this is covered, this would be covered under appropriations dollars and grant money, but roughly, I, I know it's in the agreement, but the money that we're utilizing is $200,000 from appropriations, $69,000 to, and that's for the license plate reader cameras, or, I'm sorry, $100, $100,000 for two years for license plate reader cameras, $69,200 for two trailer cameras for two years, and then we're also using the $9,000 that we're getting from the Organized Crime Retail Theft Grant. So that's what it's going to cost for two years. However, all that money is, is not coming out of the city's funds. That's all money that's being appropriated to us and already given to us through grant.
Okay. Any further, Alderman Sanders?
Yeah, how have you had an opportunity to determine whether this is appropriate for this particular county or this city, to determine if it doesn't violate anybody's rights or any, anything of that nature?
Sure. So in order for us to even do a search, we have to have a reason, a law enforcement reason. So generally, you know, crimes occurred, or if there's a missing person or something like that, so we have to put a reason in, and there are certain things you can't search for. And we also have to put a case number in there, and all that's, all that data is collected by the state, and it's audited. So we have to have a law enforcement reason to even access the, the cameras. Now, the live video, that's something that I've talked to people in the community, they feel like, you know, we need more live video out there. It's very helpful, you know, as long as it's in the right place and the right time and capturing the right thing, you know, it's very helpful for us for certain things. So we do utilize license plate reader cameras right now. There's through Motorola or Vigilant, something that the city committed to, I think it was in 2021. So it's a different platform, but Vigilant doesn't have the, the trailer cameras and the, the other two things that we're looking to get to. Flock is a, is a smoother, easier to use, more modern platform. It's something that wasn't available in 2021. Kind of really became popular about two years ago. A lot of agencies are going to that, so that's why I chose them.
Well, uh-
Would you like your second time, Alderman Sanders?
Yeah. I'll better elaborate a little bit longer.
Go ahead.
I need to use my four minutes.
You know, just to ask your question.
Um, all vehicles, police vehicles, will be designated with a, with a plate reader?
No, these, nope, these are not mobile devices. These would be stationary.
Stationary?
Yeah, and they're solar-powered.
And they're located throughout the city?
They would be, yes.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Alderman, Stacy?
You know, I hear you talk about more cameras, more, you know, we tried to get cameras, and it was shot down like fire, burning in a forest. It was not wanted. Now, all of a sudden, now we want cameras. And so, I don't know if this will pass or not, but since we want cameras, we could get them, and it was grants and money out there where we could have had cameras on every telephone pole to help deter some of the crime here in our city, and we were denied that right. But now, with you bringing it to the council, they're all in. A little sad to me.
Because- I don't know what rights were denied. Alderman Johnson?
So did this grant just come out recently, or it just came out recently, you could apply for it?
So the, yeah, the Retail Theft Grant, it's an annual grant. It's one that, that you can reapply for every year.
Okay.
And that's for the $9,000. The appropriations, that's something totally different, you know, that's being appropriated to us through Senator Durbin's office. So I don't, Darren's probably more knowledgeable about that type of money. This is the first time I've ever been able to secure funds that way. I've been able to get a lot of grants, but, so, but it's for two years, that one's for two years. The Attorney General's $9,000, that's just a one-year thing, but we can reapply for it.
You want your second? Sure.
And so just to clarify, this won't go forward unless we get the grant money, and we'll use part, the appropriations money for part of these things, but we won't get it all unless we get the grant money. Is that correct?
Right, so, I mean, let's say, with the grant, the $9,000 is a for-sure thing, have already been awarded that. The appropriations, I mean, I'm, I'm just playing it safe, you know, by, I asked for a contingency in the contract, and there is one in there. So if the appropriations fail, then we're left with $9,000, which gives us about three cam, two to three cameras, so.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Clerk, please take the roll.
Sanders.
Aye.
Aye. Clem?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Simmons?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
Stacy?
Aye.
And Shadle?
Aye.
The resolution is adopted, six to zero.
Seven, seven to zero? Did you say six, Madam Clerk? It's seven.
Uh, oh, yes, that's because we have everybody back on the floor now, seven to zero. Thank you, Attorney Zito, sorry.
Item number 13 is the adoption of Resolution 2025-113. Could you please read this?
Resolution endorsing community solar savings program through Illinois Shines, which is a state-administered incentive program to support the development of new solar projects.
Manager Boyer?
Uh, thank you, Your Honor. The city of Freeport's been asked if we would like to participate in the Illinois Solar Energy Incentive Program. Solar developers are often- in the Illinois Solar Energy Incentive Program. Solar developers are often required to offer subscription incentives. The city's largest accounts, 100 KW and under, would be eligible to receive the monetary bill credits from the program incentive. These incentive programs work on a 20-year subscription timeline, and this program was reviewed by Mr. Mudge, who is here tonight on September 8th, 2025. This subscription program application will allow Freeport to participate and receive solar incentives from solar array projects that are being installed in the area. Freeport will not have any financial or...
I did not pass that out. I'm so sorry. Do you want me to get copies for everyone? Are you just going to read it?
I'm just gonna, I'll read it.
I'm so sorry.
That's okay. The city utility accounts are appealing to the program due to large and consistent use of electricity. Many northwestern Illinois cities are joining this program, and there is a brochure if someone is interested to see it. But Mike did present at the last committee of the whole, so there were many questions asked at that time. So there is no financial requirement, except the provider will charge a subscription fee from the credit received. Staff will also incur work time to subscribe and provide detailed account information. Staff is recommending the city council to approve moving forward with the community solar with Illinois Shine to receive solar credit incentives.
Is there a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Shadle, seconded by Alderman Clem. Discussion on the resolution. Alderman Simmons?
So if I can persuade any of you, even since before my time on council, I cannot think of one person that has said, "I'm glad that the city has done this program." And I would like to remind you all that last time we set up, we signed up for this. The company was not able to honor their contract. So please just keep those things in mind when making your decision.
Manager Boyer?
I'd like to make one minor comment related to this. The aggregation contract is what the city's done in the past. This is something new, and this is completely different from the aggregation contract. This would allow the city to receive solar credits for the solar arrays that are already being built by their people.
That's the next, it's the next item. Yep.
Alderman Johnson?
From what I understood, the gentleman telling us is that the subscriptions that we do are to give money to have more solar farms or plots put up. So if we get electricity, he said that's already used in all these other farms that are around. So this means they're going to be putting more solar farms around the city of Freeport, right?
Well, we have Mr. Mudge here. Maybe he can be a little more specific. Mr. Mudge, would you want to address that?
Thank you for the question. Basically, the state, the state and the governor wants to promote clean, clean power. And the subscriptions, when you subscribe on, it's going to be for new fields that are being developed right now, or being developed in 2026, and they need subscribers. Will it continue on past '26 or '27? We really don't, we really don't know. It all depends on the incentives and things like that. Where they will be built and where they'll be placed is where it's going to be economically beneficial to connect into the ComEd grid. So, I don't know if that's answering your specific question, Linda, Ms. Johnson, but wherever these are going to be built, will be in approved locations through the Illinois Shines program. And that doesn't necessarily mean there's going to be a lot more here in Freeport or not. Probably nothing in our city, but in most likely rural areas where the connection fees to ComEd are lower. Does that help?
Go ahead.
So chances are, they would be in agriculture farming areas, the new solar fields would possibly, because it would be cheaper to put them up in those areas. Is that what you're saying?
For example, a good solar project is like what's being built right here in the city of Freeport on the old landfill. That's a perfect use for land that cannot be really used for anything else. But there's more incentives for solar companies to go into, like, brown areas and different things like that, you know, throughout, and build them. Will it do up more farmland? That's possible. But that's a farmer's choice or his opportunity. What we're looking at, though, for the specific city accounts, is take advantage of the program that the state's created to promote solar, and we can do this now. Everyone, I mentioned last time, everyone in ComEd area pays into the solar fund. So it's up to the council here whether or not you want to get some of that money that's being paid and leaving city of Freeport back in for public works, accounts only.
Any further discussion? Madam Clerk, please take the roll.
Sanders?
No.
Clem?
Aye.
Johnson?
No.
Simmons? Parker?
Aye.
Stacy?
No.
And Shadle?
Aye.
I have three in favor, four against, and the resolution fails.
Move on to item number 14, which is the adoption of Resolution 2025-114. Could you please read this?
Resolution approving an electrical aggregation agreement with, if we agree on our low bidder, that'll be that person, for the retail supply of electric for residential and small business customers in the city of Freeport.
Manager Boyer?
Thank you, Your Honor. As we discussed at the committee of the whole last week, we received bids. I believe MC squared was the low bidder, and we've got it up on the screen here for you. So with that being said, staff would recommend moving forward with MC squared for the low kilowatt provider.
At what rate?
At two years.
At what rate are we talking?
At 9.89 cents per kilowatt hour.
9.89?
Yes.
Is that your conclusion?
Yes, staff recommends the two-year, but obviously, it's at council's discretion.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Clem, seconded by Alderman Shadle. Discussion on approving MC squared. Alderman Stacy?
As Alderman Simmons stated earlier, that last year when we did this, everybody was automatically changed. If you didn't want the change, you had to send in a paper apting out, and then they couldn't even fulfill the need. And so, why are we back here again? And being that we're back here again, I hope this time, if people choose to take it, that they have a choice, and not that they're automatically changed, and then now they gotta go and change back. So I don't know how that works, but to change everybody to this MC2, I think it should be optional. If they want MC2, they can call you. But to switch everybody automatically, no. We show, we were show, clearly shown last year, it did not work. And now we're all back with ComEd.
Manager Boyer?
Mr. Mudge, I don't know if you can provide some clarity on this, but we've done this for many different times. People have saved thousands of dollars on their overall power bill, but could you explain why last year was different than the past years and why it's different than this year? And just based on those rates, how much do you think we'll end up saving based on ComEd's base rate right now?
Sure. Last year, council did agree, and we had a signed agreement with Nordic Energy. However, the, their cost, not to their fault, but it was a pass-through charge, increased the charges where they could not honor that contract. However, we decided to give it a rest and have everyone go back to ComEd. At that time, we did not know what the ComEd rate was going to be. Now, we know what the ComEd rate is. And in actuality, this morning I looked at the new ComEd rate tariffs that came out for September through May, and the ComEd rate now is at 10.6 cents. The MC squared rate, whether you do a one-year or a two-year contract, that's what it'll be. Now, bottom line is, the state set up the program where it would be an opt-out program. If you don't want to be in it, that is the customer's choice. But by not passing or adopting a contract, customers do not have a choice at all. They're just on ComEd or on a supplier of their own, and they have that choice. So what difference is, the difference between the one or the two-year contract make? If there's a penny difference, and we have 3,000 customers in Freeport, then the average customer uses about 700, 730 kilowatt hours, ComEd customers. So that saves each customer $7, $7.50 if they want it. If they don't, they can stay on ComEd right now. So ComEd's rate is set. So by passing this, or this, you're giving the customers a choice back that was really taken away from them when we all agreed, we did know what the new ComEd rate was back in April and May, when we had to replace that, original contract.
But what's going to stop it?
Stacy, did you want your second time?
What's going to stop it from hap, no, he's called up to take questions. I have a question.
So your second time?
What's going to stop it from happening again? We can't say that it is or isn't going to happen again. It's out of your hands, too.
The regulated rate that was passed on to Nordic Energy is now set for the next two years. The suppliers know what their costs are. They will hold that rate.
But you told us that last year about...
When we did this last year, we did not know what the federal pass-through costs were going to be. And in the past, in the past, it was known. It all has to do with the demand for power going up so much. But to me, I'm just simply saying, if you want to give your residents and your very small businesses a choice, this is giving them back a choice for a rate that's better than ComEd.
Alderman Shadle?
You said the average homeowner would see a difference of roughly $7.50. What is the impact taking MC squared's rate for the city contracts?
If we look at 3,000 residents, which is, which is low?
No, the city.
Oh, the city.
Not the residents, the city.
This has nothing to do with the city.
No, on this contract, how much do we save as the city of Freeport?
The city does not save any money at all.
No.
This is strictly for your residents?
No, 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 not the city residents. I'm talking the city water department, the city sewer department, our billing, the city of Freeport billings.
All right, I'll answer that. Our contract, the existing contract right now ends in December of 2026 for the city water accounts, is like at the rate of 5.61 cents. And that's, that's the public...
Attorney Zito can answer.
If I'm understanding your question, it'll, electric aggregation, this particular contract is strictly for residential, city, residential and small, small businesses. We have a separate contract for the city accounts, like our wastewater treatment plant and et cetera. So that's a separate contract that we have each year for the city accounts.
Alderman Parker?
Just a quick question. We approved this tonight. Do the people in the city have to do this, or they can ignore it and stay with ComEd?
People have two choices to opt out. Once they'll get a letter under city letterhead from the, from MC squared, if that's, they're chosen, to say, "Here's what your rate will be starting in December. If you don't want to be part of this program, let us know." Secondly, a ComEd switch letter comes out. What was the state, the same thing, in case somebody misses it. This is state statute, how that's supposed to work. ComEd will send out a switch letter. And again, if you do not want to be part of the program, you can opt out. Anyone else that's in, would be automatically in the program. But one thought that I had, I wanted to mention, what's the value of this to the city of Freeport? If it's $7 a month, times 3,000 residents, that's $21,000 a month that stays in the city. Might not seem like a lot, but every, to me, every dollar counts.
So you have to opt out, or you can just ignore it and not respond at all?
If you ignore it, you will be, you will be switched. And that's the state, that's the state statute.
It's like it's always been, Alderman Parker, if you want out, you have to opt out. Otherwise, you're in. Alderman Sanders?
Yeah, I know exactly what you're doing, sir, with this Nordic thing and trying to get it proposed to the city of Freeport or the residents of Freeport. The thing, the thing that I found out, and it's like you said, they had issues managing how they want to implement their program, but they failed. They initially failed their program because I was part of that program, and they had so much difficulties with it. In order for you to opt out of it, you have to not only go back to ComEd, but you have to go through another agency to, so they can enforce it. They have to enforce it. There's another agency that enforces it, that keeps companies like Nordic and ComEd to impose upon residents to make, to opt them in when they don't want to be in there. If they don't, if they don't acknowledge it to, I forgot the name of the company, but there's another agency that they have to acknowledge it with them so they can inform ComEd. It's almost like another liaison that's working on behalf of these suppliers. And I ended up getting out of that program with Nordic, even though I did have to go through the procedures, but to get another agency to have ComEd to recognize that I want to be with another supplier. Now you're back here again, trying to say that it's the state law. If it's the state law, then why am I with another supplier? If it was, and Nordic was having all these issues, why is Nordic coming back in to the picture?
Nordic is not.
Nordic's MC.
MC squared? Is it MC squared?
Different.
Okay.
Totally different supplier.
Just changed, they just changed the name is what they did, huh?
No.
Oh, okay. But anyway, anyway, it's not something that I think, like, one of the aldermen says that if he doesn't comply or acknowledged to a certain agency, then they automatically back into whatever this is that you're talking about, this MC squared. I don't think that should be something that the citizens of Freeport could be considering. If there's, if they have suppliers already in existence right now that they're using other than ComEd, that they should continue to use their supplier until they get one better, and that should be their option, and not the other suppliers or ComEd enforcement or the state's enforcement, as far as I'm concerned. But anyway, I know there's another agency in play that all residents have to acknowledge that they do or do not want to be part of this program. So I'm just saying, that's just my, my observation on these matters, and I think we should take these into consideration, that what you're proposing, I don't know what it, what really, does it have a clown mask on it or whatever? I don't know.
Alderman Johnson?
Customers do have three choices.
Three now? Three now?
There are three choices. One, stay on ComEd. Two, they could go back, or they could go under the city program of MC squared and, and appreciate a better rate and save a few dollars on their own bill. Three, you can go out like you probably did and choose your own supplier at your own risk. So, that's the three choices that all customers have. And I think that you, I don't say you owe it to it, but you should think about giving your residents all three options so that they can make their choice. It's their, it's their choice. Once, once it leaves here, it's back to them and their choice.
Alderman Johnson?
So, the majority of the residents in the city of Freeport are just on ComEd right now. And according to this paper, it says that from September 25 to May 26, it's 10.229 cents per kilowatt hour. Now, you're saying it's 10.6 right now?
It's 10.6 because ComEd changed their, it goes from September through May on the new rate.
On the new rate of 10.6?
Right.
Right.
The 10.2, that was like for the four summer months and blended to the winter, but now it's 10.6.
So, if we choose this contract, MC2, we choose the two-year contract, we would be locked in at 9.89 cents per kilowatt hour for those two years, which is less than what we're paying now with ComEd, which is, the current rate is 10.6, which could change at the end of May or in May 26. It could go up a lot higher than that. But if we choose this for two years, it would be 9.89 cents per kilowatt hour for those two years, correct?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, please take the roll.
Sanders?
No.
Clem?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Simmons?
No.
Parker?
Aye.
Stacy?
No.
Shadle?
Aye.
The resolution is adopted five to two. No, that's not right. Four to three.
So, it's because half the council's voted, you would need to call the mayor's vote?
Say it again, sir.
So, when you have half of the council for vote in favor of an item, then you can call the mayor's, that's one of the situations where the mayor's entitled to vote.
I heard you say that.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I'mma hold you to that.
Okay.
Okay? I'mma hold you right there. Cause I want...
Okay, this is a nonsense discussion.
Mayor, what's, Mayor, what say you?
I'm talking...
I, I.
I'm asking him a question.
You're talking nonsense.
The resolution is adopted five to three.
Item number 15 is the adoption of Resolution 2025-115. Could you please read this for the record?
That's the legal move, and I'm glad.
Resolution authorizing memorandum of understanding with AFSMI for street or forestry foreman temporary assignment as acting street superintendent.
That pass?
Manager Boyer?
Thank you, Your Honor. The street, the city superintendent has a significant amount of personal time off due to his years of service. Additionally, his management leadership responsibilities require him to be on call a significant amount of the time due to the nature of his current public works role. To ensure our staff is fully supported and has adequate time off and receives appropriate rest and downtime, staff is requesting that a memorandum of understanding be approved by the city council to allow for additional hourly pay for appointed foreman who takes on added responsibilities thereby covering this time off. This MOU pay will be for approved and assigned coverage only. The MOU approval will allow our superintendent to take appropriate time off, ensuring that the quality of their time off by knowing that they have some experienced staff who can handle the calls. It was also allowed for scheduling formal coverage with the foreman in advance of their PTO or weekend off. This increase in pay for the foreman will only be for the added responsibility as actual work time assigned during approved time off by the superintendent. This arrangement is similar to the MOU that was proposed for the water main break assignments in the utility. The MOU will provide $5 an hour increase in the appointed foreman hourly pay as approved only on hours of coverage that are physically worked and logged in the absence of the superintendent during time off. And recommendation to move forward with this $5 an hour increase to the foreman to cover for the street, the street superintendent's time off.
Is there a motion to adopt?
Some more.
Second.
The motion made by Alderman Shadle, seconded by Alderman Clem. Discussion on the, on the resolution. Alderman Stacy?
I don't understand how we can continue to move forward with increases when we're still waiting on a contract that's been not in action for three or four months. The AFSMI union continue to wait for a contract, and we continue to want to make increases everywhere but with them.
Manager Boyer?
What do you mean by three or four months?
You tell me.
No, I don't know, I don't know what you meant by that.
When was their contract up? When did their contract end?
Their contract is still in place and we're negotiating.
Yes, it's in place now until we hit one.
I believe you said something to the effect.
However, but when did it end? And, and you were not prepared to move forward with it. But you're prefer, you're prepared to move forward with increases where you want increases. Let's be fair across the board. They deserve a fair contract. Let's make it happen.
This is, this is providing additional wages to a street superintendent to cover in between time. We've already discussed it with the union. It is acceptable by, to the unions moving forward. So, this is basically so that we can give our street superintendent time off and make sure that he can sign his duties during the time that he has weekend off.
And what about our 911 people working 12-hour days?
That has nothing...
This is nothing...
I know it has nothing to do with it, cause we don't want to discuss that.
Well, it's a different topic.
And it's a topic that won't never make the agenda because you're not gonna put it on.
AFSMI negotiation is not going to be on the council floor.
No, it will not. But I'm just saying, get them a contract.
Stay on task here. Is there any questions?
Yep, let's stay on task.
Please stop being disruptive.
But you're disruptive to me.
If there's no further discussion, Madam Clerk, please take the roll.
Sanders?
No.
Clem?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Simmons?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
Stacy?
No.
Shadle?
Aye.
The motion pa, the adoption, the resolution is adopted five to two. I'm sorry.
Item number 16 is the adoption of Resolution 2025-116. Could you please read this?
Resolution approving an airport management agreement with Freeport Aviation for Albertis Airport.
Thank you. Manager Boyer?
Thank you, Your Honor. The city issued a request for quote or RFQ for the fixed base operator airport manager contract for Albertis Airport on August 11, 2025. Initial meetings were held with four prospective applicants and three applicants submitted applications by the September 2 deadline. The applications were opened on September 4 at City Hall and reviewed upon, opening by myself, the mayor, Alderman Sellers, the public works director Darren Stekel, city clerk Dobby Anderson, and attorney Steve Cox were present. I am pleased to notify that all three applications received were excellent, and all of them represented well-qualified applicants. The lowest of the three responsible applicants was Jeff Monica, Freeport, Illinois, at $157,500 per year. I am recommending the city council authorize the negotiation and execution of an operator contract in the form set forth in the RFQ with Jeff Monica and according to the terms set forth in his response to the RFQ.
Is there a motion to adopt?
Some more.
Second.
We have a motion made by Alderman Shadle, seconded by Alderman Clem. Discussion on the resolution. Alderman Johnson?
I'm just looking on the contract, and it says that the operator, airport operator shall keep regular posted business hours, 8 to 6 Monday through Friday, 8 to 5 Saturday and Sunday, 8 to noon. Now, does that mean that the operator will be there in person all of those hours? Or can they just be reached by phone? Or how do they cover all of those hours?
If I could answer that, I believe they can have a designee available during those hours.
Thank you.
Alderman Stacy?
Yes. Who's going to run the airport when this person is at his other job? And what terms was this negotiated under? And is the contract for a year or 19 years?
I'll try to answer that. The operators responsible to cover the hours that were specified in the agreement. So, whether it's them sitting there or they have their alternate, they're, they're responsible.
What do that mean? An alternate? We've never had an alternate before.
Could you please allow him to finish the?
I'm just asking, what is an alternate?
Would you like me to finish the questions or go back to the alternate?
Finish the question.
Okay. So, that I understand, would you please remind me of the last question? Yeah, it is automatically renewed each year unless either the operator or the city is interested to open the contract and renegotiate it, in which it will be, a new request for quote will be sent out in a similar fashion as this last one. So, it'd be available for anyone to provide a quote for.
Okay, you said something about the, the hours stated, unless what?
No, I was, I was trying to answer your question about the 19 years, one to 19 years. So, if the operator's happy and the city is happy, it will auto-renew each year.
I said, who is going to run the airport when he is at his other job? And you said something about it will be ran at the hours stated by him or an alternate.
Right.
So, what's an alternate? We've never had an alternate before.
That's incorrect. We have someone, it is, if there is an employee of the operator that can carry the office hours.
But the employee of the operator is not who got interviewed for the position. You know, I just think it's sad that this lady that spoke to us tonight, for 28 years, you know this is her life. This is her livelihood. For 28 years, she have ran that airport, and there is nobody in miles that can touch her. They're not equipped. They don't know what they're doing because they haven't done it. And shame on you to take and not even consider her for this position.
Manager Boyer?
I will say that the current operator has been operating the airport for five years, and this was an open process that accepted three qualified statements or quotes. The quotes were opened with a panel who reviewed them all, and the lowest quote was the one that was recommended for council to move forward with.
Alderman Sanders?
Yeah. This resolution that is bringing, is being brought into our focus at this, at this time. Who is the person, who's drafting this authorization of this resolution? And how, and how do we even come to the decision of establishing whether or not we should move forward with this resolution in terms of who introduced this resolution? I mean, I mean, who gives the auth, who gives the authorization to move on, on an issue of this caliber, of this magnitude when it comes to contracts and things like that? I didn't know, I thought this was something that the council should be creating this type of resolution. It's not, it shouldn't be the city manager who's creating this resolution of hiring and firing someone that, that's dealing with the contract. I mean, just, just automatically spell out, had not spelt out the terms of, and things of this nature, fires renew, and there's someone currently working there already. And I feel that if council has not intervened in terms of the drafting of this resolution, I think this thing should be dismissed, thrown, thrown in the garbage until we come up with the right protocol on how we're gonna conduct contracts with any management organization and system that we should be totally informed, informed about it. And I feel that that is where we're at right now. We, we're not in a position to be doing resolution with the improper authorization of this, of this particular resolution. And I, and I feel that everyone here in council should really take a good look at this and see what the, see what is causing friction within the city and eliminating a manager, city man, I mean, a superintendent out at the airport, eliminating that job and opening it up for others to come in and, and look at that job without any scrutiny. I don't feel we should be conducting this type of thing. And, and I think, I think council has the last say-so when it comes to the resolution of authorizing any memorandum. And I'm not, and I'm just saying, that is, that should be the procedure unless you show me something else in writing that does not give the body, the council the authorization to dismiss something that we have not even considered to authorize for a contract. So, I think the council, not, not no administrative here or city manager, mayor, or attorney Zito, or anyone like that injecting or imposing anything on this particular resolution matter. And I think this should come directly from the intelligent minds that sits here in our council to look at the overall picture of what we might be voting for, unless we should be, we should be dismissing this and coming back to it at another time so we can make sure that what we're accepting here is properly set right, or, or we got the proper provisions to allow such an authorization to go through. I don't even think we should be even entertaining this, this matter at this time. So, let us reevaluate ourselves and look at this thing real hard, real strong. I think, I think...
Your four minutes has expired, Alderman Sanders.
My four minutes, can I?
Yeah, your four minutes has expired.
Can I adopt another minute?
No. And no one's fired. This is, every contract has an end date.
Are you making a comment, Mayor?
I, I can.
You can?
Would you please stop interrupting? Every contract has an end date. This is just an end date where... Alderman Sanders?
I'm sorry.
Please stop.
I'm sorry.
Attorney Zito?
Just for clarification, this contract is being presented to you, the council, to vote on. You can vote yes or no on it. You guys have the final say on whether or not to approve who the city manager is recommending. It's just a recommendation. The council has the final say on it. And that's what's before you guys tonight.
And if you read the memo, it says that all three were qualified, the chosen with lowest amount.
You're gonna see.
Well, you...
So, unless there's any further discussion...
I want my second.
You would like your second?
Yeah, I like my second.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah. Yeah. Attorney Zito, you failed to mention the fact that the person that put this on this agenda was not authorized to do so. You failed to acknowledge that. Yeah, go ahead.
The city manager has the authority to place items on the agenda.
Well, we didn't see that in the memo. There was no memo drafted on that, on that matter. Cause we have to go through the same protocol.
That is an authority that the city manager has, has to, I mean, all these other items are on the agenda that the city manager put on the agenda.
Is there any other discussion on the resolution?
Whether it's the right protocol or not, it's one of them.
You should probably have a better understanding.
Yeah.
If there's nothing further, Madam Clerk, could you please take the roll?
Sanders?
No.
Clem?
Aye.
Johnson?
Johnson? Simmons?
No.
Parker?
No.
Stacy?
No.
Shadle?
Aye.
Uh, we have three in favor, four against. The motion, or the resolution is not adopted. It fails.
Please withhold. Such inappropriate tonight. Can't, I, it boggles my mind. Let's try to remain professional.
We love you.
Item number seventeen is approval of a bid. Could you please read this?
Amen. We love you.
We had a bid opening on September tenth, twenty twenty-five sewer lining for twenty twenty-five.
Manager Boyer.
The city of Freeport has nearly a hundred and thirty miles of sanitary sewer. During the annual project evaluation, cure and place lining locations are identified for rehab of the sanitary sewer piping that has cracks and defects, inflow and infiltration, or sags or settlement. Our I E P A mandatory C MOM, that's the Sewer Capacity Management Plan, requires specify that the Freeport addresses, addresses annual sewer rehabilitations for our collection system, mainline piping for environmental concerns. Sewer lining is considered an industrial, an industry accepted method of sewer main pipe rehabilitation and is more economical than open cut excavation methods. Sewer lining is over ten times cheaper to install and industry standards estimate over sixty years of sustainable useful life after installation. On September tenth, twenty twenty-five, Frederick Graham and city staff had a public bid for ten thousand eight hundred thirteen linear feet of sanitary sewer lining. These sewer areas are identified as areas of street replacement. The city has four reputable bidders that specialize in sewer lining and submitted bids. National power rotting was the low bidder at four hundred nineteen thousand seven hundred sixty-three dollars under the engineering estimate, I might add. With approval, the installation should complete, be completed by February twenty twenty-six. And staff has budgeted this in the sewer budget. Staff recommends moving forward with that national power rotting with the lowest responsive bid.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
We have a second?
Sir?
The motion made by Alderman Shadle, seconded by Alderman Clem, discussion on the bid. Alderman Sanders.
Is there anybody else? Wants to
Alderman Sanders.
Oh, okay. Manager Boyer, I, we had this conversation before, I believe, and we talked on the, on the some of the things that would take place to make sure that the residents are aware of the construction work that is going to take place. Will any of this interfere with their service as these guys begin to do their project lining program and everything? Will, would, would anything disrupt their service in the process of you guys taking care of those linings?
Should not take, it should not, no.
And, and you guys are doing it, what we call a, a, a video taping of each line before we do an installation, that we can make sure that this is the appropriate thing to be doing for this particular area. I don't know how, I don't know how extensive our, our televising program is. And so I, I couldn't, I really can't make a, an observation to determine what it is that is going on in that field. But I, I suspect you guys would keep us informed about the conditions of these lines and why we're investing into these projects.
Yes, that's correct.
Any further discussion? Madam Clerk, please take the role.
Sanders?
Oh, yes.
Clem?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Simmons?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
Stacy?
Aye.
And Shadle?
Aye.
The motion passes six, seven to zero.
Item number eighteen, would you please read this discussion?
Discussion regarding awarding contracts to a dissolved business entity.
Alderman Simmons?
I will just read the memo. So I'll try to get through this as quickly as possible. Pursuant to my responsibilities as a duty, duly elected all the person, I am formally requesting that the following may be placed on the agenda, which was just read by City Clerk Anderson. Considering, consideration and discussion regarding the city procurement practices in relation to the warning of contracts to a business entity that was involuntarily dissolved by the Illinois Secretary of State in June twenty twenty-five. It has come to my attention that a business whose corporate status was involuntarily dissolved under eight oh five I O C S five twelve point four zero of the Illinois Business Corporation Act continues to be awarded bids and contracts for city projects. As dissolution, dissolution terminates the legal standing of the corporation, except for limited purposes of winding up its affairs. The situation may present compliance concerns with both state law and municipal procurement ordinances. My requested council action is to direct staff to review current city contracts and pending bids involving the dissolved entity, seek a legal invention, opinion, excuse me, from the city attorney regarding the validity of contracts awarded to entities without good corporate standing and discuss whether policy or procedural updates are necessary to ensure future compliance with applicable laws and protection of taxpayer funds. I respectfully request that this, oh, we don't need to do that. It's already on here. Thank you, though.
I, um
Alderman Stacy?
Would just like to read eight zero five I L C S five dash twelve forty of the Illinois Business Corporation Act outlines the procedure for the administrative dissolution of a corporation by the Secretary of State for failing to correct a default, such as failure to maintain a registered office or file required document. The secretary first sends a notice of delinquency to the corporation. If the default is not corrected within ninety days for most defaults, thirty days for certain others. The secretary issues a certificate of dissolution, formally dissolving the corporation. And that's what has happened here with Alba and Son Earthworks LLC. And if you go back in August the eighteenth meeting, they were awarded these demos. However, I believe it was June the thirteenth, twenty twenty-five. They were already in an involuntary dissolved situation. They're not even listed as a company currently. And ninety days before that would have taken it three more months back. So we're probably looking at them not having a license or being affiliated in the state as a company back into March. However, we just gave them jobs totally almost a quarter million, and they're not even registered in good standing. How does that happen? You know, we, we, we sent out for these bids. And we're supposed to trust what you're bringing us. And time and time again, we're finding that we can't trust what you're bringing us. Because this should not be, this should not be coming to us if you're not in good standing. You knew back in March that your license were suspended. April, May, June. July, August is when you were granted these. And, and whoever chose this, I know it was the lower bid, but who's looking at the people that's bidding for these jobs? And why didn't you know that they were not adequately a business with the state?
All of that is false. Go ahead.
No, see, this is what I talk about. You're telling me, don't be disrespectful to you, but you, this is the third time.
Not true.
This is the third time you have
Putting out information that is not true.
No, it's not. I have it all right here. Please.
Director Duckman, would you like to address those?
No, I, I understand. And I, I think that it's certainly something. I can see that you're upset. I, I understand. I'm not trying to talk, go ahead. I'm sorry.
No, I'm just saying, she's telling me I'm rude and I'm interrupted and, and don't, but this, she have fronted me three times tonight.
All right.
Go ahead, Wayne.
I was just gonna say, let's start back with what we're talking about here. And I'll start with the simply, with a simple explanation as I can. And then I'll, I'll get into more of the details of the contract, et cetera. What, what we're talking about here is when you have a company, corporation, the state of Illinois requires you to file the fee. I do it every year. I have a company and I believe it's right around seventy-two dollars for a corporation. You file some paperwork. It's usually about a page. And every year you're required to file as a corporation in the state of Illinois. That, that's, that's a rule. So what we're talking about here is that Alba and Son, it has to do with when they filed their paperwork. I have been in contact with Alba and Son on this matter. They have, they have filed their paperwork. I've seen the receipts. I have them. I, I mean, I, I have no reason to, to be dishonest about that. They have filed their paperwork. My understanding is they filed their paperwork late, which is probably why it's showing up as an involuntary dissolved organization. So if you file, I believe the deadline is August first. Again, I, there's different types of corporations. When I filed my corporation in the state of Illinois, the deadline was August first. So if you don't, if you don't, on August second, you're going to be involuntarily dissolved by the state of Illinois. The state of Illinois will let you file your paperwork late. But until you do file that paperwork late, you're involuntarily dissolved. Now, going back to how does the city of Freeport protect itself from this type of, you know, inaction? Whether it be with malice or not, whether they intended to, how do we protect ourselves? You know, there is a clause in our contract that says we require all contractors to follow all state and federal laws. That's when they bid on the project, they know it's not just city of Freeport ordinances, it's state and federal laws. Obviously, staff does everything they can to understand and to find any, you know, misuse of if somebody doesn't follow state or federal law. They're obviously long. There's many rules, but when we know about it, we will address it, which is why I had been in contact with Alba and Son to figure out what's the issue here. The remedy is when staff becomes aware of an issue, they have the right to bring it back to council to terminate the contract. We are now aware of the issue. Alba and Son has filed the paperwork. They've showed me the receipts. I've seen the receipts. And now the next step would be council can either say there was an issue, they fixed it. Or council can say, you know what, that's not good enough for us. We're going to move to terminate the contract. And there's really, I mean, those are your options. To be fair, I mean, if that's, if you think that filing this paperwork is egregious of enough to where they, they need to have these contracts revoked, I think you talk to council and see if that's something you want to talk about. If you're like, no, you know what, they made a mistake. They, you know, they were honest. They showed that they filed their paperwork late. We think that they've remedied the situation. Let's move this forward. I mean, that's a decision that you, I believe you should make. I mean, if we want to talk about it more, I answer more questions about it, that's fair. I mean, I'm here to answer them.
Alderman Sanders?
Thank you. Director Duckman, I understand the in compliance of, of the contract. But the fact of the matter, what came first, the horse or the cart? And the thing is, if the company or corporation was not in good standing with the state of Illinois, you cannot award or consider awarding any business entity. Now, let me finish. Any business or entity with any acknowledgement of a potential contract, they're off the table. They're not part of the bidding, whatever, receiving of the awards and the contracts and things like that. There's, if there's others in line and one falls off that, that didn't come into compliance, then the others move up. Other corporations move into that slot. Until, like you say, they came in, they came in and came, and got their, got their company back on status and everything. But we're talking about time, date, and when the state of Illinois gave them that status to do so. But until then, that contract is still in play. Or contracts or awards are still in play. I don't know who the players are, but the fact of the matter is the one that's, uh, didn't come into compliance just can't jump back into the first line. They just can't do that. You know, they just can't, just because they fell off, they can't be the first who, who, who receives an award, contract award. They can't do that. That's not the proper way it should be done. I don't know who else, um, application was on file. But we need to know that. We need to know if there was other considerations that wanted, that wanted those award, that could have been awarded those contracts and things of that nature. So, so until we understand the timing and the dates of those contracts or the awarding, then there shouldn't be any awards out if there was only one person receiving the award or one company receiving the award. There shouldn't be any. We shouldn't even be entertaining it. As a matter of fact, it should have came back to the council. So the council could reevaluate it and say whether or not we want to move forward or not. We can't just blanket, take it and say, well, we're gonna wait until you come into compliance. Make sure your status come, come into compliance. We can't do that. We have to be able to have that discussion while it's on, while it's out there before someone has to correct their mistakes.
I understand your point completely. I'm hearing you clearly. What I'm saying is, is you need to make a vote now and make a motion to say, I'm, I motion that the council revoke the contract and move to the next person because the contract has been awarded. And then you have to make that motion. What's that?
Wait a minute, wait a minute. This is wrong.
I mean, if you, if that's what you want to do, go ahead.
You, you can't vote on anything. You can't vote tonight. Tonight's a discussion only. If, if something's put on in a future council meeting for action, that's fine. But no vote can happen tonight.
I understand. And I, I apologize for misspeaking, but my point, what I'm trying to say here is they are currently in compliance. I have the receipts of them being in compliance. So we're talking about this and we're talking about that. When our, our, our contract awards say that we require a, a person entering into the contract to follow federal, state, all laws. And when we know as staff that a law has been broken, that they are not in compliance with the law, and we know about it, we, we're talking about it right now. So if there's something, but we also know that a remedy was made. They filed their paperwork. I have the receipts. They're now in compliance.
This is not about an awarding and a bid, Alderman.
It's not, we're not awarding a bid.
Alderman Simmons, do you have something?
Um, so because as of June twenty twenty-five, that, on the state website, that had not been resolved. So I would like to know when. Also, the bids we awarded, we used grant funding, knowing that they were, or if not knowingly, they were not compliant. Will that affect our future grants or put us from being able to get grants? Because we aren't doing what we're supposed to do.
No, and, and I would say no, and I would confidently say no. Anytime a grant managers, when you're working in a grant, they will always have comments, questions. We need you to file a certain way. We noticed that you're missing this compliance here. Anytime that you find an issue and you work to remedy the issue, you're usually, they're not going to penalize you for that. It's, it's the same with the state of Illinois. You missed your compliance date to register as a corporation. You missed your compliance date to register as a corporation, they'll still take your money and let you register as a corporation. You know, they'll still, you know, they, they will. People make mistakes, they don't see it, and then, and then you look at it and you say, "Well, how do we remedy this situation? Are they willing to get into compliance? Or do they want to, or are they fighting the compliance?" You know, they, they, they are aware of the issue, we brought it up to them, they showed us that they're filed. I, I mean, that's the facts of the situation. If there's a remedy that wants to be investigated or discussed with our legal counsel, what remedies and options we have, I maybe ask that question. What's, I'm sorry. I, I became aware of this probably early part of, late last week, is probably my guess, is when I became aware of the, the, that's when I became aware that they weren't in compliance with this. That's when I found out. Yes, I have, I have it on my phone. If you give me a minute, I'll try to find it. But I do have, it says receipts, filed the paperwork, paid the receipt, I, I have it, I've, I have it in my phone.
Um, I, I don't know the, the specifics as whether or not this would create a problem for our grants. I suppose that is a question ultimately for the grant administrators to say, "Hey, do you guys think this would cause a problem?" That at the time of the award, they technically were not in good standing with the Secretary of State's office, they have now remedied it, what say you, grant administrator, does that create a problem? I can't speak for the grant people, we would have to ask them that, to know for certain.
Alderman Clem.
All right, just a question for Darren or Director Duckman. Was a bid bond issued on this job?
Yes, there's a bid bond in this. It's actually a check. They, they have a bid, when contractors bid, they have the option stated clearly, they can either do a, a check, cashier's check, or, or a bond. So, and this one is a check.
Dollars and cents regardless of what happens, we're covering.
Yeah, yes.
Then we will move on to item number 19, which is reports of department heads, finance. Community development?
Nothing tonight, Madam Mayor.
Public works.
Two, two things quickly. We've had a significant amount of calls recently about sewer laterals or sewer services at homes that have root issues. Just a point of clarification for residents, sewer laterals or sewer services are owned by the homeowner from the house to the main. Those issues, while you can call the city and ask for assistance, those are financially borne by the residents themselves as part of our codes and ordinances. So, that's one point I wanted to make. The second point I'd like to make tonight, and I've hinted on this a handful of times, but recently we've seen an uptick from really abusive behavior to our public works staff and our people that answer the phones. And I'm making it a point of clarification that we're not gonna tolerate it at the public works department. We will politely end all calls that are made that are abusive. Our staff does not get paid to be abused. I realize people are having situations that they're upset about, that doesn't mean we get to scream, cuss and yell and take it out on the city employees. We're here to help solve problems. And moving forward, we will politely end all calls that are not done in a professional manner with our department.
Fire?
Nothing from fire this evening.
I just have two things. First off, on our, on the Freeport Police Department Facebook page, there is a flyer about the Civilian Police Academy. So we do have openings, we're looking for more people, so if anyone's interested, you can visit our Facebook page. We're, we're taking people until September 26th and planning on starting on October 2nd. So all the information's on there, there's a flyer. Secondly, back in 2024, the Stevens County ETSB voted to switch report management systems. So currently, the Freeport Police Department, Stevens County Sheriff's Department, and fire, we utilize a, a system called CIS. We've been with CIS probably since 2012, I'm guessing. Since 2012, CIS hasn't evolved at all, it's just kind of remained stuck in the same form as what it was. And so we felt that there is a need for a change, so ETSB voted to switch to Central Square. This is a huge project. It's gonna go live tomorrow, 8 o'clock. There has been training, obviously, but the, we're, we're gonna be, we're gonna flip the switch tomorrow, 8 a.m. So please be patient, because that's gonna affect the way calls are generated, it's gonna affect the way that we write reports. It's also gonna, things that, that we've had available in certain parts of this program may not be available in Central Square. We'll, we'll figure that out, we'll work out the, the kinks on that. I know one of the things that's really popular is our police activity blotter that's posted. I believe that's like an algorithm or something, correct? That's not anything we control, but it was something that IT helped start. As far as Central Square, we have to determine if that's even possible right now. I mean, tomorrow is gonna be just the basics on how to operate it, and then from there we, we will dig deeper in there and find out exactly, you know, all the stuff that it has. It definitely has a lot of different options and opportunities for us, but we're, we're gonna have to learn it before we're able to showcase all that stuff.
Library?
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure everybody here knows that the Sculpture Walk is having our big opening events this week. On Friday, there is a ribbon cutting at 12 p.m., which will be down by the gateway area of the Arts Plaza. And then the reception for the Sculpture Walk is from 5 to 7 p.m. at the library, it is open to the public, and you will be able to meet and greet with some of the artists of the sculptures.
IT? Airport? City manager?
Uh, yes, Madam Mayor, I have two items. The project that's going on at the intersection of Stevenson and Park Boulevard has had an expected completion date of Friday, September 19th. Due to a gas main issue, this project will be worked on through the next week. The gas main in the intersection is at risk of being disrupted, and the gas company has been notified and their efforts are currently the final step before paving can take place. We understand the inconvenience this is causing to the community and we are excited to open this up, area up with upgraded infrastructure as soon as possible. Thank you, and I appreciate your patience and understanding on that. In addition, for the better part of this summer, our new and excellent animal control officer has been under attack by groups on social media that have gone even as far as making threats to the officer, those involved in their daily tasks. I find it necessary to stand up for all employees of the city and specifically our animal control officer who is doing an outstanding job in ensuring that the laws are followed, the job gets done, and most importantly, these animals are taken care of. To everyone making these misinformed and hateful posts, understand that these employees are members of our community who show up to work every day in order to serve the city in their capacity. We appreciate the community's input, but threats and hateful speech should not be aimed at our workers. Thank you.
I have nothing new. Alderman Sanders?
Oh. No.
Alderman Parker? Sorry, Alderman Clem, my apologies.
Nothing, Madam Mayor.
Alderman Johnson?
Um, yes, we have a neighborhood watch meeting this Thursday at 6:30 at 3002 Farmdale Lane, and also this Saturday is Block, the Block Party at Franklin State from 1 to 4 and Church in the Streets from 1 to 2:30 on Sunday at Franklin State.
Alderman Simmons?
No, I don't have anything, thank you.
Alderman Parker?
Yes, the Civilian Police Academy the chief talked about is an excellent program and I highly recommend anybody can take it. Then the others, we have a neighborhood watch meeting next Monday night.
Alderman Stacy?
Fifth Ward has a neighborhood watch meeting tomorrow at 6 o'clock at the Church on Carroll.
Alderman Shadle?
Nothing tonight.
Public comments?
My name's Cheryl Altman. And so Wayne, you admitted that you knew Elbers didn't have the right states filed out with states, but that you allowed them to tear down buildings. And also, you, Darren, or Rob, should have been out there. They did not follow EPA regulations at all. I've got pictures of it with dust flying everywhere, no fences surrounding stuff, and that's on my property. Shh. And I'm sure there's, they didn't follow it anymore because we've got pictures of this. Also, you tore down my house, Wayne, you think you got a big win. Now that I found out tonight, you don't. Also, you took my driveway, my backlot and my steps. Why? That driveway was not part of the building. And Rob, I've been on you for three weeks to get me the paperwork of all this. And you sit there like... And Mayor Miller, you don't like it when people come up here and talk about Elbers, it irritates you. It irritates you because, you know, they get things wrong. And I sure hope they pay for it soon because people are waking up and they have not followed it, and thank God that this lady will be able to hopefully keep her job because people voted for that. They're wrong to kick her out when she's done a great job and devoted her life to that. It's wrong. You wanna get somebody in there that's crooked, just like the rest of most U-City people, that's why you wanted her out.
Any other public comments?
Hi, Sue Cook, Winchester Drive, and I noticed that we go for the lowest bid. I know you look to save the buck because that's what everybody does, they always go for the lowest bid. And we're a distressed city. And I hate that label, distressed city. Freeport isn't distressed. So maybe sometimes going for maybe not the lowest bid, maybe the next. Maybe, maybe looking at everybody's qualifications and saying, "Yeah, they came with a low bid and they have all the qualifications we need, but this person really knows the area." So I'm very happy that it didn't go through. Also, for the people that are on oxygen, when we're talking about this, COMED or MC squared, if, if they're on oxygen with COMED, or if they're on a ventilator, or if they're on any kind of home oxygen equipment, or home medical equipment, and the, the power goes out, you are on a list that immediately your area is worked on right away because some of these people, they cannot go. They have generators, but the generators don't go that long. So COMED immediately works on your property so that the oxygen comes back up and the ventilators come back on. And I know this is about disability rights, and I know this is about the ADA, and maybe that group should have been pulled in, but I don't know, Mr. Mudge, what would happen with MC squared? 'Cause everybody, like, I started out saying, "Everybody likes to save a buck." If MC squared really does save the, the dollars, do they also have this list to be able to lift the people that are on oxygen, are on ventilators, are on home medical equipment, whether it's IV drips or whatever? Do they have that? That's something to look into. Maybe not the lowest bid, and if possible, allow us to have the choice without having to opt out. Because sometimes opting out isn't really opting out, you have to jump hurdles to opt out. Thank you.
Any other public comments, sir?
Just, just for the record, COMED is sold to every company for all the power. They control the list and everything, that doesn't go away. So if power goes out, COMED will send a message or whatever, just like they always do, no matter who's...
Any other public comments?
Mayor Miller? Councilmen and women? And you, my constituents? I take my position seriously. And yeah, sometimes I too fall short and get upset. Because right is right and wrong is wrong. So I stand before you tonight apologizing for my shortcomings. I'm only human. For future reference, Director Duckman? I just think it's only right that everybody be in good standing, their bids on jobs, and maybe that's something that can be added to the ordinance or to the process or to the whatever, that they have to show that they are in right standing. I'm not trying to take nobody's livelihood away. Right is right and wrong is wrong. And we have to come correct. We all have to come correct. It's not, this can work for you and not for me. We're in this together. And with that being said, I just wanna read Isaiah 40 and 8. "The grass withers and the flowers fade, but the word of God stands forever." Father God, in the name of Jesus, we praise you and we thank you for being God all by yourself, Lord. Continue to look down upon us, your people, oh God. Continue to lead us and guide us, order our steps according to your word, for it's your word that cannot return void. Give us understanding. Give her a greater knowledge and understanding of what we need to do for this year's city. For we stand in victory. We walk by faith and not by sight. We thank you for being in control. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Any other public comments this evening? I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
So move.
We have, we have a motion made by Shadle. Seconded by Alderman Parker, all those in favor?
Aye.
Have a good evening.